All right, we'll call the meeting to order. A little earlier than our usual time, but it is March 11th, 2025, is the school board meeting for Lakeville School District. If everyone would just rise with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have four of our seven board members, so it is a quorum. If we could do introductions, starting on my right.
Amber Cameron.
Paul Carbone.
I'm Matt Swanson.
Michael Baumann.
Kim Baker.
All right, are there any requests for any additions or modifications to the agenda? If there are none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as drafted.
So moved.
It is moved by Amber. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And seconded by Paul, being a first and a second. All those in favor of approval of the agenda as drafted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's approved unanimously. We'll move on to the good news. Superintendent Baumann.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good news, March 11th, for Lakeville area schools. Start with Principal Brett Domstrand was elected to serve a second term as the state representative for the National Association of Elementary School Principals. On February 25th, the Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association announced the results of its elections. Lake Marion Elementary Principal Brett Domstrand was elected to serve a second term as the National Association of Elementary School Principal's state representative. As the state representative of Minnesota, Domstrand will continue to serve as a liaison between M-E-S-P-A and N-A-E-S-P. Here in the South Suburban Division, we're advocating for students and staff throughout the state, and he will represent MESPA at national events, ensuring that Minnesota principals' voices are heard nationally. So congratulations to Mr. Domstrand and to Lake Marion Elementary. Students of the Month. Lakeville area school has a Students of the Month recognition program. Students can be nominated by anyone in the Lakeville area, and staff, families, and community members are all eligible to nominate. We're excited to announce that March's students are Josie Foals, a second grader at Lake Marion Elementary, Mesan Mazanvi, who is a fifth grader at John F. Kennedy Elementary, and Georgia Bassi, who's a junior, 11th grade, at Lakeville South High School. So congratulations to them. As well, we do Staff of the Month, and that is also a recognition program that highlights our staff members, and they can be nominated by anyone in the Lakeville area schools community. So we're excited to announce that March's staff are Janice Differding, music specialist at Lakeview Elementary, Philip Swain, school success liaison at Century Middle School. So both those, congratulations to both of those award winners. Our special education inclusion awards, Family Connection Special Education Parent Teacher Organization, has a long history of promoting inclusion in Lakeville area schools. And during Inclusive Schools Week in December, students, staff, and community members submitted nominations for individuals in our schools and community who go above and beyond to increase inclusion. The 2024-25 award winners are Larissa Har, special education teacher at Cherry View Elementary, Brady Kelly, student at Maguire Middle School, Stephanie Market, speech-language pathologist at Maguire Middle School, Valerie Miller, special education teacher at Lakeview Elementary, Anne Rouse, Lakeville community member, Jenna Shrandler, oh, Shrankler, sorry, special education teacher at Highview Elementary, and Deborah Triplet, paraprofessional at Century Middle School. Give a round of applause for those winners. Lakeville Science Olympiad teams exhibit excellence at state. So congratulations to Lakeville North High School and Kenwood Trail Middle School Science Olympiad teams on their successes at the Minnesota Science Olympiad State Tournament on March 1st at Bethel University. Lakeville North placed ninth as a team in the high school division, which is the best they've achieved in quite a while. Kenwood Trail's Team Neutron placed ninth as a team, and Kenwood Trail Team Proton placed 10th as a team in the middle school division. So congratulations to those students and those team accomplishments. And if you want to read more about the amazing things that we're doing in our district, ist194.org/news, and you can find more information. And then on a different note, just want to share the Lakeville Online Academy Elementary. We have determined to keep that program open. We had to make some modifications with staff and programming, but we are keeping that open, and I just want everybody to be aware of that as we move forward here today in our board meeting. Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Superintendent Baumann. We're going to move on to public comment. I will read my little piece, and then we will open up the board for anyone who, those who have registered, to speak for three minutes. So the board will open up the floor for 30 minutes to allow the public comment, public to address the board with comments and concerns. To participate in public comment, individuals must have registered in advance using the form provided on the website by noon on the Monday before the scheduled public comment section. There will be no board response during this session, and public comments framed as complaints and/or concerns about students or staff are not appropriate in public forum due to the data privacy laws. These comments should be addressed to the administration outside of a public meeting. Likewise, complaints about school board members should be privately directed to the board chair and/or the superintendent. No formal action will be taken on a topic presented during public comment. As necessary, the administration will follow up with the appropriate personnel on any concerns that need to be individually addressed. Also, if necessary, the board will follow up during board communications at the next regularly scheduled board meeting. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes, and the board will provide a sign when the participant has 30 seconds remaining of their time. Thank you, Kim Baker. Please try to keep audience noise to a minimum to allow everyone the opportunity to speak uninterrupted. So we will get things kicked off with Cadence. You can come right here.
Hi, I'm Cadence Kepers, and I'm in ninth grade. I have been with Lakeville Online Academy since the middle of fourth grade when COVID hit. I was blessed with an amazing teacher, Ms. Krupke, which, by the way, if this is bad, it's she helped me write some of my first papers, so. She really helped me transition into this new learning environment and become more than just a teacher to me, but a friend to my family. Even though we weren't in physical classroom, each teacher made sure to create connection and bond and make the most of every get-together from trunk or treat to the morning meeting on WebEx. I believe LOA Elementary School truly helped me transition to LOA Middle School. I believe that if I would have not had an online experience before middle school, it would have been a total culture shock. Having my elementary teachers to lean on during this time was very helpful, and I still reach out to them today. Not to mention the flexibility, whether you are traveling, involved in sports, or just like the extra free time, LOA is a great option for the ones who like to make the most of every day, and there shouldn't be an age restriction to do so. I also deeply appreciate the extra help and time my teachers put in to make sure that I was doing the best I could be doing and I was supposed to be doing. And if I was lacking in any areas, my teachers would make time to go through every assignment with me and explain anything that was misunderstood. Overall, my experience with Lakeville Online Elementary School was great. The workload was exceptional, and the teachers were helpful, responsive, kind, and, most importantly, patient with all of my questions. Thank you for listening and making my online experience the best it could be. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you, Cadence. We have Jamie and Tisha. Jamie and Tisha. How about Peter?
So I had a speech prepared for this afternoon, but we got an email that said that my school was staying open, so I just did some little edits. Hello, my name is Peter, and I'm a fourth-grade student at Lakeville Online Academy. I've been in this school since kindergarten, and I have had all three of our teachers, Mrs. Blaha, Mrs. Sauber, and now Ms. Krupke. With the help of my teachers, my mom and dad have been able to teach me at home. I have learned so much from all of them, something that all the teachers have taught me about in every grade is perseverance. Perseverance is the ability to keep doing something and not give up even if things are hard. My family and the whole school is persevering and fighting to keep our school open. I am so glad the school board and the superintendent persevered and found a way to keep Lakeville Online Academy Elementary School from closing. This school is amazing, and I want it to stay open for kids like me who love learning at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Quentin. Welcome back, Quentin.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me talk today. I had a lot of fun last time, so I asked Mom if I could do it again. We are trying to think of something new to tell you. You see, we found out today that LOA won't be closing after all. You already know that my school has great teachers, my school gives families choices, and that people really need to know that this great school exists. Mom says you must have gotten lots and lots of emails, all saying the same things. I told her it's really strong when one person repeats what another person has said, because that means a lot of people agree on the same thing. And when a lot of people agree on the same thing, that thing must be very, very important. A lot of people have been telling you that my school is too important to close. I agree, and I agree, and I'm so happy you agree too. Thank you for saving my school.
Thank you, Quentin. Laney. Laney. Final one. Kylan. Did I say it right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Kylan Kepers. I'm in sixth grade, and I've been with LOA on and off since middle of first grade when COVID hit. Some things I really enjoyed when I was in LOA Elementary is a flexible learning style. I think that it gives kids more freedom to do the things they love by having that learning style while also being affected, effective, sorry. I also really love that if I needed any help on assignments, I could reach out and ask, and the teachers get back to you quickly. Some students have a hard time grasping things quickly, and if I needed any additional help, I would have more time to do that with my teacher versus if you were in a classroom, one-on-one support isn't always available. I appreciate teachers can focus on the subject you need with. You individually rather than as a class. I have experienced becoming more confident in the subjects that are more difficult for me when I've received this kind of help. Also, LOA's elementary workload is very reasonable with things to focus on to prepare you in the future for middle school. I really enjoyed morning meetings because it still gives students a way to connect with each other and make friends. Overall, I really enjoyed being a part of LOA Elementary and getting to connect with people while being able to still do the things I love and have a flexible schedule. I feel very lucky and blessed to be a part of LOA and have the teachers that I had.
Thank you, Kylan. And that concludes our public comment for the day. Move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone wants to remove from the consent agenda for discussion? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Director Baker. Is there a second? And seconded by Director Carbone, being a first and a second. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's approved unanimously. Move on to our reports and discussions, first being the transportation report.
The report needs to be changed, the transportation report.
You might not need to, you might need to level out your height there.
That's what the stool is for.
You can, you could start, you could start rolling if you want, and we'll get into it.
Sure, I can add you up on the slide, so we can certainly talk through it.
That'd be great. We just, we have a firm deadline of six o'clock to end today because of elections, so, yeah.
Mr. Chair, other members of the board, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today. On behalf of Dave Moore, myself, and the rest of the employees, owners of Schmiede and Sons, it's truly a pleasure to be here in front of you this evening. I do like to try to keep the presentation light and informal, so if you have any questions along the way, just give a warm smile or wave your hand, and we can certainly answer any questions as we go along or discuss them at the end, whichever you prefer. Up on the slide next, we just would like to talk about some of our key personnel throughout Schmiede and Sons. First off, Mike Forbord. I've been a lifelong resident of Lakeville area schools. I grew up, I went to Lake Marion. From there, I went to Kenwood, went to Lakeville. It was still just Lakeville, believe it or not, it was the last year, so if you do the math, I graduated in 2005. I currently have two children that will be going into the district as well. They're two and a half and four. Oldest one, Owen, actually is just in speech at Crystal Lake, so that's been a treat to actually be going back through the second generation. Today with me, I have Dave Moore. He's actually on a second stint with Schmiede and Sons. He is also from Lakeville. I won't go into when that was. I don't know if he'd share or not.
Graduated before, Mike, we'll just say that. Before there was, yeah, Kenwood Trail was Lakeville, back in the day, Lakeville High School.
And in total, between his two stints, he has been with Schmiede and Sons for 22 years. Dave is our primary contact operations, for the day-to-day operations of the Lakeville Schools contract. So he's the go-to, he's the glue, he makes it all happen every day. Around that, we have a group of support people. We have Bill Forward, our chief operating officer, a resident of Lakeville since 1981, formerly of the Lakeville Police Department for 25 years, and now he serves as our chief operating officer. Jay Young, our chief financial officer, he has been with Schmiede and Sons.
Mike, you missed one of his other accolades. He was a Lakeville area school board member as well.
He was.
Okay.
That is true. He does have his name on a few schools. I think he always reminds me, if you think it's bad now, just remember, I went back to the public three years in a row to build three schools in a row. So as things were growing in the early 90s, mid 90s, he was involved with a lot of those efforts, so certainly challenging times then as well. Jay Young is our chief financial officer. He's been with Schmiede and Sons for 34 years. So you're getting the theme, I don't know if it's a life sentence or a choice or not, but we certainly have a lot of tenured employees here at Schmiede and Sons. Julie Storm, she is our routing coordinator for Lakeville, so she focuses primarily on all of the routing of the regular education students. So if you're looking for a bus stop assignment, those types of things, she works on a lot of those, and then also works on some of the behaviors, issues, and those types of things throughout the year. And Julie is also the mom of Josh Storm, who's the Lakeville South Boys Hockey Coach, and her son Ben also is the assistant coach. So an interesting connection there. Chad Lewison, he's been with Schmiede and Sons for 20 years, he's our special education manager. So he's in charge of all of the routing, managing all those different varied schedules. Ally McCullough, she is our director of human resources, so she gets to deal with all the fun stuff, the drug testing, the compliance, driver files, all that stuff that none of us want to do, I guess. And then also, I have the pleasure of working with my wife Catherine. So we've worked together for most of our professional career. She is also the director of operations. We actually met here in high school, so. She is also the director of operations. We actually met here in high school, so. Becky Clausen is our training and safety manager. So she does all of the annual driver evaluations. So a school bus driver is required by the state to have an annual evaluation once a year. She'll go out right along, complete all the necessary paperwork that goes along with that. She also trains all of the ISD 194 staff that drives the Type III vehicles that the district owns. So primarily used for speech, golf are the two big ones that come to mind.
Debate.
So she goes through and maintains a list, and I think there's probably between 30 and 40 ISD 194 employees that are certified to drive IS Type III employees transporting students. And that typically takes two or three hours per employee, just depending. And then also, we have Cassie Crawford, who is our charter manager. So she oversees all of the field trips and extracurricular transportation outside of that regular to-and-from scheduled service. Next up, our terminals, and kind of along with our terminals, I'll tie into some of our company history because I think the garages, if you look at them, you can see that they've been all added on to at least three times. Holyoke's been added on to far more than that. And the buildings kind of show our history as a community, and then as a company that serves a community in the sense that as the community grows, we had to add on and find more places to put vehicles and those types of things, so. Schmitty &amp; Sons started serving Lakeville area schools in 1952, so it's about 73 years or probably technically our 72nd school year. The first garage was actually at the Family Farm on Judicial in the northwest corner of the district. They used it to operate buses up until the mid 90s. At that point, it just became, there wasn't enough room to have enough buses there to justify somebody operating the building anymore. And as the buses got bigger, they didn't fit in the old garage anymore. In the mid 70s, Schmitty &amp; Sons acquired the other bus operator that was serving Lakeville Schools. And along with that, we acquired the Holyoke Garage, which is shown there on the bottom. Like I mentioned earlier, the Holyoke Garage has been added on to several times along with the district. So if you look that side that faces McGuire was the original part, and it's all been added on to the north from there. Due to the continued growth and site limitations of the Holyoke Garage, in the mid 90s, Schmitty &amp; Sons acquired another parcel of land on the south end of the district and built what we call the Pillsbury Garage. It's just south of McStop, about a mile and a half near the Red Fox, if you're familiar with that. And that garage has been added on to three times. Today, Pillsbury holds all of our full-size route buses, so the Class C to-and-from buses that you're accustomed to seeing, and then also all of our charter fleet. We have room for probably 75 buses inside, something like that. So on days like last week, days that it's cold, Lakeville, here with Dave, he's lucky enough to have almost all of his buses inside, which sure makes the nights a lot easier and not worrying about him starting, not digging him out of the snowbanks and those types of things. So we're very fortunate to have these facilities. And then also, I should mention too, and I mentioned it a little briefly earlier, but in 2016, Schmitty &amp; Sons became employee-owned. So the son of Schmitty, Dan, and Sue Schmidt sold the company to the employees, which is truly unique, especially in the transportation industry. At the time that it happened, I had never heard of it, didn't really know too much about it. As you kind of look around, you do start to see it more and more. One example I always think of is Hy-Vee's employee-owned. You'll see it some like in the trucking industry. But it's a really cool, no-cost benefit to all of the employees. So it's a wonderful, wonderful thing for us to be a part of. Now, what happens on a daily basis, we have 56 Class C routes. So when I say Class C, that is a full-size school bus. You know, there's Class A or Type A, that is a little yellow bus. Type B, which they don't really make anymore. Type C is just their standard school bus, which we operate. And then a Type III, which is a van that we use or the district owns a couple as well. So we have 56 full-size routes, and we also have 56 special education routes. Transport roughly eight to nine thousand students a day. We travel over 10,000 miles every day. And that doesn't, and then we'll do any field trip or sports trip that needs to be done by the school.
And I would add the 8,000 is just in the morning, so then we have to do it all in the afternoon. So it's technically 16,000 students that are transported each day.
So with that, part of our obligation to the district is we take care of setting up all the routes for special ed and the full-size buses. You know, as we grow, add neighborhoods, we get that all plugged into our software and get that taken care of for you. And then we are the primary contact for if people need something, they'll call us before they call you. And then we evaluate on a regular basis just the efficiency and look at what we can be doing better, merging, you know, as some neighborhoods get a little older, some are getting newer, we'll switch things around. We conduct bus safety for the students on a, that's an annual basis. Third week in school is when we do that. Let the little kids get to practice jumping out the back of the bus and doing the emergency evacs, which is a big deal for them. And then, Mike talked about this earlier, we, the drivers all have to comply with yearly evals. We do monthly safety meetings. And then also, what we do is we, we'll watch the load counts. You know, we design the routes, and then we figure out, you know, how many kids are riding, where we can fit some more. You know, if we are struggling with some areas that have, you know, we'll get an area that gets maybe 10 kids moved in in one month if some of the areas are crazy. So we'll have to tweak things as we go. So we're always keeping an eye on that because we're looking for a good ride for everybody, you know, both the parents, the students. When a bus is too full, then you guys start to hear about it, so. Alright, so this first slide here, and we'll go a little bit more in-depth to the tiers and which schools are served and how they're served underneath each one. The service that's provided here in Lakeville is truly very uncommon and unique. Operating a true four-tier system where one bus is serving four schools. I talked to Dave today. I thought about it through our association. I've never heard of anybody else that's doing it. It's most common that you see two tiers. So for instance, it would be like a high school and then an elementary. You know, typically with the bus leaving, you know, 7:00, 7:15, serving a high school at 7:45-ish, and then having like an elementary that's like at 9:00, something like that. So obviously, with the four tiers, we are able to serve more schools, more students with fewer routes. And we have 16 buses that actually do serve all four tiers of the 56 that we mentioned earlier. And another unique thing that we do, and it helps kind of explain some of the school's start times, is that these times are built in a way that makes this structure work. And the first tier is dependent on the second tier, on the third tier, and the fourth tier. So if something goes wrong in the second tier, the times that, you know, as such, traffic, weather, it's going to affect the third tier and the fourth tier because it's the same bus hitting all of those tiers, if that makes sense. So another unique thing is McGuire Middle School is actually kind of, we call it the half-tier because it shuttles from Lakeville South over to McGuire. So there's still, I think it's getting a little bit less and less over the years just as some of the tenants' areas have grown. But doing it that way allows the south end of the district, we only have to cover it one time from McGuire and Lakeville South, and again, saving those trips and those buses from having to go down and cover that area again. We bring them to south, and then we just shuttle them over to McGuire, and it prevents having to have separate bus route for McGuire going all the way down to those southern areas that would take just 10 minutes of dedicated drive time just even to get to the first stop, not to mention all the stops along. So in the AM, just kind of an overview of a normal day for a driver. The bus garage opens 5:30. Dave's always there. I'm sure there's a handful of people that beat him there that are waiting in the parking lot. I don't know all these early people. It's amazing.
They love coming to work.
It's the one place I think you can go to that you can show up at 6:00 and you feel like you walked into a day that's half over. So they begin, the drivers come in, they begin pairing for the day, making coffee, socializing with all the other early birds. I often say I don't know where we'd be without coffee. I think that would be probably the number one thing that would cause an uprising. At 6:00, the first drivers will start to head out to their bus to complete their pre-trip inspection. That takes about 15 minutes. So the first buses actually start to leave the garage at 6:15 in the morning. From there, the first student pickups happen on the very far west side of the district, which would be a Kenwood attendance area, and they start picking up at 6:25 AM. So that's going to be the furthest out to the west. And then on the north side of the district, the buses start picking up around 6:30. And then, so the buses are working from the far end and then picking up students on their way into Kenwood. And in the PM, the first wave of buses depart the garage by 1:40. Those would be the buses serving the early middle schools, and then the second wave depart the garage at 2:10, and those are the ones serving the high schools and then McGuire. And to wrap up the day, the last elementary drop is at 4:55, and the last garage, buses back to the garage at 5:10. So you can see there's about 11 and a half hour period from when we open and when we leave to when we get back. So it truly is a half day of service, as we call it. And I'll real quick explain just, you know, what we call Tier 1, that's Kenwood and Century. I got 20 routes out of Kenwood, 16 out of Century. You know, we're serving 800 students out of Kenwood, 900 out of Century. Kenwood, 16 minutes is our shortest route, 48 minutes is longer. Kenwood is a bigger area we have to cover. Century's a smaller area, so hence 13 minutes is our shortest route, and 28 minutes is our longest route. We can get Century done pretty quick. Then we roll on to the high schools. North is a smaller area as well, so we have 18 routes. Just under 2,000 kids assigned to a bus, 17 minutes is the shortest route, longest one is 40 minutes. So South and McGuire, we do have some routes at South that are South only and McGuire only, but basically, like was talking about, the ones that go south of County Road 70, I'll just say that. South's County Road 70, those, the high school and the middle school ride in together. So those are the combined routes. We have 12 of them. And then the longest route is 59 minutes, but by the time we leave school and get down to 280th Street, it's a long drive if you haven't been down there, so. Lots of land. Tier 3 is our three elementary schools that are early schools. So that's Christina Huddleston with nine routes, Oak Hills with eight routes, and Lakeview with seven routes. So as you can see, actually, my update did not make it into this, Mike. So the shortest, yeah, that's fine. So Christina Huddleston, now that we've, we redid the boundaries last year, and Christina Huddleston now has seven routes. Shortest route is 10 minutes, longest is 20. Lakeview, that area got bigger, so we added some more routes. And now some of the shorter routes are 12 minutes, and 46 minutes is the longest route time. And last early elementary is Oak Hills with six routes, serve 300 students. It's a smaller area as well. We can, shortest route is 10 minutes, longest route is 22 minutes. And then the Tier 4, what we call the late elementaries, is going to be Cherry View, East View, JFK. Hy-Vee's the new one, Lake Marion and Orchard Lake. Biggest areas we cover right now for Orchard Lake and Lake Marion, those are the two of the longest elementaries. So we have to go out to the west and out south, and JFK falls into that one too. So Lake Marion wins by having a 60-minute route, which is the peak. We try not to route anything longer than that, but by the time we get out just west of Texas Avenue, we're out in the country, and the kids all fit on one bus, so we're just going to get you home on one bus. So JFK as well, once we get south to Alco, you're talking a 50-minute bus ride. But then, once we get up to Cherry View and East View, both, one has seven routes, one has eight routes, and both the longest routes there are 20 minutes. And then your new school, Hy-Vee, everything is right there. We have nine routes. We get just under 600 kids ride the bus. Seven minutes is the shortest route, and the longest route is 13 minutes. So they are on and off quick before they can actually start to cause any problems.
So you can see that obviously some of those shorter route times are the ones that we're pairing together through all the schools, so that we try to keep them in the northern section and then pair them.
Add a couple of quick questions. Do you have a question you want to first?
If you want to ask first, that's fine.
I just wanted to clarify, and I believe I discussed this with Superintendent Baumann. We're on this four-tier system. Is there a cost savings because we're utilizing fewer buses?
Exactly, less routes.
Okay.
So when you shorten up, like Mike said, a lot of school systems only use two tiers. You know, they'll bring high school, middle school in together, and then they'll try to get all the elementaries, which is the same start time, which is great, it sounds great. But if you just took the sheer number of kids in Lakeville and divided that, I think you'd need 30 more buses, minimum, to do a, say, a two-tier system.
And then my other question was, how did the addition of Hy-Vee kind of change things as far as planning and number of buses that were needed?
So we were basically servicing the same area, but we were able to take the buses, you know, East View lost a couple buses, Cherry View lost a couple buses, and we only had to actually add one route, I believe. So we just tweaked, we were able to tweak what we were using for our attendance area and then work it out that way. So we really didn't add many buses.
Director Baker?
I have two questions too. They're not really related, but I'll start with the first one. When I see the elementary routes between 45 and 60 minutes like that, I just think that's a long time for a kid to sit at the end of the day, especially like after sitting in classroom all day. And I'm, you're saying that that's because of the area that you're trying to cover, correct? Do you keep any data as far as like bus referrals that happen for behavior related to routes that are longer versus routes that are shorter? Would that be something that the district would house, or is that something that you try to look at? Because I mean, I just, I guess curiosity, like, you know, as a teacher, we're trying to hold it together all day, and so I know sometimes when they get on the bus, they're pretty, they're ready to go home, right?
Happy to see them get on the bus.
Right, so then I also think of like, is there a way to mitigate some of that? Because I mean, you can't do anything about the amount of ground that you're covering, but would it be, are you adding like a bus aid to some of those longer routes to help with some of that behavior that may occur because it's a longer route so that the driver's not distracted?
We will have a monitor ride, and it's not necessarily the longest of the road. It's whatever roads maybe need some attention, and it can be the shorter routes. But usually, the drivers get to know the kids on the longer routes better, so they have a better relationship, if you want to say. And that's typically not the area that we have concern, you know, with student behavior.
Perfect, I love to hear that. My second question is just one that I get from parents a lot, and I'm just curious as to your take on this. So a lot of parents that have students with disabilities, sometimes they're riding special transportation, sometimes they're riding regular transportation. How is the information as far as like related to the child's disability communicated to the drivers so they know how to handle those situations?
Usually they'll call us and say, hey, can you, you know, I want my, if the kid has some special needs, we will, the parents usually let us know, and they'll be like, hey, I want to treat them as normal as we can, so, but just keep them in the front. And we usually will give the driver just their student ID with the name and address and be like, hey, keep an eye on this particular student.
And when the, often for the special ed side of things, and we'll go into that a little bit here further on the next slide, when the student's assigned to special ed transportation or special- advised transportation, we'll receive additional information from the person that's managing or working with that student. If it's a solo transport, if it's a, they require a special sort of harness, whatever it may be, we would include whatever they tell us in the notes for the driver. So on the route information, it would say the student needs this, this, this. If there's an issue with the student, you know, maybe try some of these things. So we certainly try to include as much information as we're given in getting that to the driver. And then also, throughout the year, the safety meetings, we do have district staff that come out, and they'll also go through tips and tricks to kind of help with those students and those types of things, so.
So that's like on the notes that the driver has for their route every day?
Yeah.
Okay, because that's good too, because then if you have a substitute driver, they would have the same information. So thank you, I appreciate that.
And then I would just add one thing. Tier 2, so the high school tier, that is where we also provide service for the All Saints and the Pathway students. So the All Saints students all ride in on the high school routes. And then there's our shuttles from the high schools over to All Saints and then to Pathways as well. We're getting down there, I promise. Special ed routing, we have, like I mentioned earlier, we have 56 special ed routes, over 600 kids that are transported around the district. And then with that, we also, we go curb to curb. So all the special ed students, we will stop at their house, and that's what's called curb to curb. And then some of the students we transport, both cognitive and physical disabilities, so we'll know if they need to be in a walker, wheelchair, and probably half those routes have an aide with them so they can help monitor the students and keep an eye on the students or help with anything that's needed. And then part of the other kids we transport on the special services van are the McKinney-Vento students, the home displaced kids, and then the students attending care and treatment programs. And then part of the preschool age kids also get a ride, depending on who the school tells us. The school just gives us a list of who we need to, who qualifies for that, so. Oh, this is still me. Student behavior, not that anybody gets in trouble, but I work with each one of the schools, and when I say aye, it's either the principal or somebody they designate. And if I'm not there, they'll work with... And, and if I'm not there, they'll work with Julie in our office, and we just go over, you know, when all the kids get in the bus, there's a list of rules that they have to follow. The school, the principals actually come out to our startup meeting every year, talk to the drivers. And we go over bus expectations of what the principals are looking for and what the drivers are going to do about it. And then we're all on the same page. So we're all presenting, hey, you know, three simple rules, hands yourself, stay in your seat, keep the volume down. And then, if they can't do that, and they're struggling a little bit, we'll try, you know, whether it's the front seat or, and if they still are having a hard time riding the bus, then usually a discipline ticket is written up. Or if something else has caused an argument between Timmy and Suzie on the bus, then usually I'll ask the principals, they'll, they can either request video if something happened, and we have videos in each one of the buses to, to see who is doing what. But the school is able to bring the kids aside and talk to them and figure out, you know, what's the best scenario, whether that's going to be seating chart or what we're going to do. Like I said, we're looking for a good ride for the driver, the student, and we just want everybody to just not have the bus be a memorable part of their day unless it's a good memory, so.
And I will certainly say that the, the principals coming out at the beginning of the year, we've done that the past two years where they actually come to our startup safety meeting. The consistency across the schools is super helpful, that the expectation is the same across all of the schools. That makes it a lot easier for the drivers because they know what the expectations are, whether they're going to, you know, Oak Hills or they're going to JFK. They know that the principals are all on the same page, everything's kind of handled the same way. So even when they're dealing with different student groups, the schools are handling it the same way.
I just wanted to bring up too that I believe, well, I've seen them anyway, that there are also tickets given out for good behavior on buses, which, yes, which I think is awesome.
That's something the school came up with a couple of years ago, and it's worked wonders. We talk about them all the time, remind the drivers, hey, stop and get these. It can be anything, they, they, I don't exactly know how they work inside the buildings, but I know on the bus where to give them out when the kids are being good. Whether, you know, students are fighting to get off the bus and somebody stops and lets somebody out in front of them, or even if some drivers, if it's your birthday, just anything to reinforce that positive behavior, they get a proud pot ticket.
Yeah, which is great, thank you.
We have a slide here next here about the communication of route assignments. And I will say, I kind of laugh when I see the slide, is that this used to be a much bigger deal, even just five to ten years ago. We used to mail out postcards and do all of these other antiquated things, as you can imagine back in the day. Now, once we finish up routing in, in mid-August, we go through, we upload the information into Infinite Campus, and it allows the parents to view the student transportation information right there. The fourth week of August, which is typically the week before school starts, we actually still call all of the special ed families to provide them with the transportation data. And that also just creates that two-way communication with those families to, if there is any other concerns or issues that when we call about the route assignment, we're able to, to get that feedback directly from the family. So we find that helpful to do that still. And then I would also mention, as part of this slide, we do have the Here Comes the Bus Parent app that's available for all the general education families. There's currently fifty-three hundred active accounts. Each one of those accounts can be monitoring one to however many students may be in the family. And the app allows you to monitor the bus along its route, and when it's approaching its assigned stop. And then depending on the notification criteria that the parent sets up, that it'll notify them when the bus is getting close. This is one of those things when you, when you start working on it or the company starts telling you about it, you, you can't really believe that it actually works. It does work, we get like zero calls or zero inquiries. I have my nephew set up on my phone, and I'm like, every day I get a notification when his bus gets there. And so it's been really cool to see, and I think it's been a tremendous success. And it's dramatically cut down the number of, of parent phone calls when the bus is maybe a minute or two late due to weather or traffic or whatever else may happen.
I promise, we're almost done. You're not going to hold up a sign on me, are you, Kim?
No.
Okay, just checking.
I put it away.
All right, just checking. Bus stop criteria, you know, when setting up bus stops, we just, we're looking for the safest corner. You know, big buses are generally all at the corner unless you live on a busy street or certain criterias where you will get picked up at your driveway if it's, you live on County Road seventy or, or Dodd or, or one of those, we're not going to make you walk. So, for secondary students, you can walk up to a half a mile to your bus stop. For elementary students, it's three-tenths of a mile. But generally, you know, we try to make a bus stop that works for everybody. We reevaluate them in the summer, you know, parents can contact us right on our website. If they want to stop, request for them, they just fill it out, tell us why, we'll look at it, talk it over. And then, we just, unfortunately, a lot of parents, yeah, want to stop right at their house or their intersection. That doesn't always work, you can't stop at every intersection, so we just try to make something that works for everybody. And then, a lot of parents want us to come down cul-de-sacs, that doesn't work very well either. So, we try to not turn around a bus very often, but sometimes we have to. But yeah, we try not to go down cul-de-sacs as well. So, just some of the things we, we do when we're looking at bus stop, there's a whole host of things that goes into it.
All right, so in addition to all of the to and from service that we provide, we also provide all the charter service for the school district. So with that, we, last year we operated almost twelve hundred trips. So these would be for field trips, extracurricular activities, so all sorts of different things. These are the ones that are typically going outside of the district, whether it's certain camps, activities, whatever it may be. We do have basically a separate fleet allocated to a charter service because with our four-tier system, with the buses being out so long, they're still out on to and from routes. And often we're supposed to be bringing the high school team to Apple Valley or those sorts of things. So, on busy days, we always count on, you know, using those buses to get students to where they need to go. But some days, we count on the to and from buses, and a prime example of this would be like track and field day for the elementary schools. When we're trying to move twenty buses, thirty buses of students, we always give them, hey, you can do whatever you want between nine-thirty and one-thirty, because that allows us to use the, the drivers and all of the buses from the to and from service, when they get done with their last elementary school, they can go pick up the first elementary school and start bringing them to track and field day. And then as long as they're back by one-thirty, they can make it for the afternoon routes. So we supplement, but there are times for those larger events where we do count on the to and from service buses to do that. Spring is definitely the busiest time when it comes to charters. Field trips are a big one in the spring, at the end of the year, trips. And then also spring sports, they seem to cram a lot into a short window. So every Tuesday and Thursday, it wouldn't be uncommon to walk out and maybe see one or two buses left. And then we also have sport shuttles that are built into our to and from routes. So they'll bring students between the middle schools and the high schools to transport them to those buildings. In addition to that, we do, for all of our teams that go to state, we offer complimentary upgrades to motor coaches. Sometimes they take it, sometimes they don't. Sometimes they say it messes with their flow, and they like to stick with their normal bus and their normal driver. But some, some teams jump on the opportunity, so that's always kind of something fun that makes it a little extra special. And then I just added one slide here at the end about our battery electric school bus. So we have had a battery electric school bus since the fall of 2017. It is a 2018 model year, E-Lion Class C school bus. It was the first one in the entire upper Midwest. Basically, it was the first one that wasn't in New York or California when we bought it. It currently has about seventy-six thousand miles on it. And we originally partnered on the project with Great River Energy and Dakota Electric. So we're all partners in the project, and basically the goal of it was for all, all of us to learn a little bit more about the technology. And so currently, the bus serves Lakeville South, Maguire and JFK, travels about eighty miles a day.
So what's your opinion so far?
Like anything else, it has its pluses and minuses. New technology is always going to create some challenges. But I think, you know, to and from school bus certainly could be a good application once the technology maybe advances a little bit further. You know, we don't want the drivers to deviate, we plan where they go, we plan how far the route is. So if you had a vehicle that fit those parameters, it's a good fit. But maybe where it isn't such a good fit would be like some of the charter buses where they might be going to Northern Minnesota, they might be going to Southern Minnesota. But the to and from services, you know, they go out for a prescribed amount of time, they come back, we can charge. It's kind of a controlled environment, we can put them back and all those types of things, so. I would say as the technology continues to evolve, it could certainly be a good fit.
Still got a little ways to go getting there, but.
And with that, that wraps up our presentation. Certainly, take any questions. And then also, I'd like to extend an invite if anybody would like to come out to take a tour, attend a, a safety meeting.
Ride and drive, I'll let you drive, you can't leave the property, you can let, anything, you know, within reason. You guys are certainly more than welcome to, to come out, so.
Appreciate it, thank you guys. All right, moving on to student nutrition.
All right, good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Baumann and Executive Cabinet. Thank you for having us today. My name is Kristin Rezak, I am the Director of Student Nutrition. Today I have with me Kim Heron, our Coordinator, as well as Evan Morrell, our Training Specialist. Deanna Tonsager is the Cook Manager at Lake Marion Elementary. Julie Wharton is our Support Specialist. And Lori Schaefer Berg is the Cook Manager at Cherry View Elementary. Our student nutrition team consists of fifteen kitchens. Throughout our kitchens, we have fifteen managers, fourteen second cooks, seventy-two part-time cooks, as well as our own pool of subs, about twenty-seven subs. At our district office, we have the four of us, myself, the Director, our Coordinator, Training Specialist and Support Specialist. Both myself, Kim, both, yes, both myself and Kim are both registered dietitians. Student nutrition staff are required by USDA to complete continuing education annually. Depending on the employee's position, they are required to complete five to fifteen hours per year. Here in Lakeville, we also have an internal certification program, and staff can take additional classes to advance their certification level in the department. Each position is required to be certified at a certain level. Student nutrition programs are highly regulated by USDA in the Minnesota Department of Education and must meet financial requirements, documentation requirements and nutrition standards. The O2 Food Service Fund is required to be kept separate from the General Fund of the School District. Our sources of revenue come from reimbursement for meals served and claimed, staff meal purchases and student à la carte purchases. Any revenue to the O2 Food Service Fund must stay in the O2 Fund. Allowable expenses from the O2 Food Service Fund must be directly related to the operation of the school nutrition programs and be an allowable cost as determined by the Minnesota Department of Education. As a highly regulated program, we must maintain records in many areas, including procurement, applications for educational benefits and food production. Just as departments in the General Fund must follow procurement processes, so must the O2 Fund. With procurement processes, we must follow required procedures and maintain documentation of all procurement activities. As operators of the National School Lunch Program and School Breakfast Programs, student nutrition is eligible to participate in the Minnesota Free School Meals Program. While meals are free for all students, all meals must be claimed by the district based on each student's approved eligible, eligibility, individual eligibility. A family does not need to submit an application to receive free meals. But if they want to qualify for other educational benefits within the district and community, they must complete an application annually or be directly certified through the state of Minnesota. Student nutrition maintains and approves all applications for educational benefits. Daily food production records in the kitchens are required to be kept. These serve multiple purposes. They are a tool that managers use to plan for how much to order and prepare based on past menued items so as to minimize waste. They also are used as documentation of what was served for the meal to show compliance with meal patterns, nutrient standards, and that enough food was served to justify the number of meals served and claimed. School nutrition programs are reviewed by the Minnesota Department of Education every five years. Students become approved for educational benefits through one of two different avenues. Applications or direct certification from the state. Families can fill out an application based on household income, a foster child, or certain household benefits such as SNAP, which most people would know as food stamps, MFP, or the Minnesota Family Investment Program, also known as welfare, FDPIR, the Food Distribution Program on Indian Reservations, or Medicaid. Students can also be directly certified through a file received from the state. Included on this file are students who are foster kids or are receiving any of the previously mentioned state awarded benefits. Our free and reduced percentages have increased every year for the past four years. It is a result of a combination of things. First, there were more families qualifying for SNAP, a federal program helping families with food insecurity during and right after the pandemic. Then in the 2023 school year, the Minnesota Department of Education included Medicaid as a qualification for free or reduced cost benefits via direct certification based on Minnesota Department of Human Resource income levels. This increased the number of students automatically qualifying for benefits by ten percent in our school district, creating a big increase in our compensatory revenue and bringing our free and reduced percentage higher than it has ever been. The percentage of students approved for educational benefits decreased this year. Two-hundred-nine fewer students were directly certified and twenty-four fewer applications have been approved to date. This most likely is a result of the decrease in unemployment and families receiving qualifying benefits or income exceeding the threshold. Minnesota Free School Meals Programs may also impact how many families are applying for benefits. As they are already receiving meals for free, they may not feel a need to apply for other educational benefits they are eligible for, especially elementary families. Nutrition standards for the child nutrition programs are based on the Dietary Guidelines for Americans, which are updated every five years. When it comes to planning menus, we must meet different daily and weekly requirements, including calorie ranges for elementary, middle school and high school levels, which are based on average nutrient needs for students in these age groups. Eighty percent of the grains offered must be whole grain rich. There are minimum daily requirements of one ounce at elementary and middle school, two ounces at high school. Minimum meat and, or meat alternate requirements, one ounce daily at elementary and middle school and two ounces daily at the high school with a total of eight to twelve ounces required per week. We must offer two choices of milk at breakfast and lunch. We must offer vegetables in each of the subgroups. There are subgroups from the dark green vegetables, legumes, red, orange, starchy and other vegetables in the minimum daily and weekly amounts. Three-quarters of a cup daily at our elementary and middle schools and one cup at our high schools. We must offer a variety of fruit daily. Fruit offerings can be from fresh fruit, canned fruit in water or light syrup or one-hundred percent juice, dried fruit or one-hundred percent juice. No more than fifty percent of our fruit offerings are allowed to be from one-hundred percent juice. At our elementaries, we must offer half a cup as well as at our middle schools. And at one, at the high schools, we must offer one cup. Sodium limits over the course of the week are required, with more restrictive limits coming in June, July of 2027. And then starting next school year, there will be sugar limits on milk, cereal and yogurt that is offered. Menu planning is all about finding a balance of offering students options they like while offering healthy choices. The items served on school menus are not the same products we find in grocery stores or in restaurants. For example, the pizza we serve is on a whole grain crust with reduced sodium cheese and reduced sodium sauce, pepperoni that, or sausage that is made from turkey. The breaded chicken filet we serve is a whole muscle filet with whole grain breading and is lower in sodium and always baked, never fried. None of our schools have fryers and everything is baked.
Kristin, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Just, just generally speaking, what's the process like when you're looking at setting up a meal plan for the school year? And does it change throughout the year? Are you always looking at different options that are available? And like, where do you go to look at the food and examine our options?
So, yeah, we do try to switch things up. We look at data, are things going, are certain entrees serving going well, do kids like them? We take student feedback. Obviously, our, our food production records are a good tool for us to use, how much. how much of each entree are we serving? And, and yeah, then we do go back. We meet with managers monthly to talk about what, you know, what might we put in place of it. We attend food shows. There's a big one every summer. There's various ones throughout the school year that Kristin and I attend that manufacturer reps will show us different, different items, different recipes, different ways to prepare maybe some of the foods that we're already getting, just to kind of give variety to students.
And we start our menu planning for the school year in January. So, we are actually almost done with our menus for next school year because our food booking is due the first of May.
Amber.
To kind of follow and piggyback on Matt, I think I have family members in many districts, so I feel like I learn things from them. But I think some districts have kind of this like scratch or trying to have like a scratch philosophy and have chefs on staff to help kind of curate recipes and things. What's our, where are we kind of in that? And is that something we're, we want to do? Or is it better to do it a different way here? What's your, yeah, what's your leadership style?
So, we will be talking about that a little bit here in just a minute. But we, we're continually striving, trying to incorporate more scratch cooking into our menus. One of the big things that I'm working on right now is standardizing our equipment across the kitchens because we have kitchens that don't have kettles or tilt skillets, or maybe they don't have a convection oven, or they don't have a combi oven. So, I am working on trying to standardize the equipment so everybody has the same equipment. We can standardize how we're cooking across the board, also standardizing the product outcome that we get since we have the same equipment, so. So, Offer vs. Serve was developed in the 1980s. Offer vs. Serve requires that all the required food components or food groups be offered to students for school lunches and breakfast, but allows a student to decline one or two offerings. The Offer vs. Serve approach was introduced to reduce waste and cost in school meal programs. It also allows students to select foods they prefer and want to eat, increasing customer satisfaction. Offer vs. Serve is required at the high school level and is optional for grades K through eight. It is common practice for school districts to elect to follow Offer vs. Serve for K through eight due to the many benefits. If we did not follow Offer vs. Serve, students would not have a choice except for the entree or fruit in what they are served and would have to take all of the menued items. It would increase costs as we would need to prepare enough of every item for each student, and we would see a significant increase in cost, in food cost, in food waste, and a decrease in customer satisfaction. The Minnesota Free School Meals allows students to receive one free breakfast or lunch per day, but a student must take a reimbursable meal for it to qualify as a free meal. Under Offer vs. Serve at breakfast, they must take three items, one of which must be a half cup of fruit or juice. Most of our breakfast entrees count as two items, so most of the time, a student just needs to select an entree and a fruit or juice to get the meal for free. At lunch, they must take three different components or food groups in their full serving sizes, and one must be a half cup of fruit or vegetable. If a student does not have the required items or components on their tray, we are required by USDA regulations to charge them à la carte pricing for the items selected. Our kitchens collect organic waste during preparation and at the end of the day. Any food that has not been put on the serving line that is able to be safely saved without compromising the quality is saved. For example, taco meat or prepared fruit and vegetable trays. We use forecasting to plan our production for the day so as to minimize waste.
Can I ask you a quick question on that? So, just so I'm clear, so they're required to take three items. If they take two, we've got to charge them, but if they take the third, then it's free. I mean, is there any system that we could have where we're not wasting? Because I'm assuming kids take all three and they throw something away, right?
Yep. So, I mean, we, we try to encourage kids to take the full meal. And if they don't want to, that's when we tell them, well, if you have money in your account, then we will have to charge you.
Is there any way they can donate it by leaving it in a place that it could be reused?
Yep. So, most of our schools have what we call our share tables. So, they can place items that that are individually packaged. So, if they don't want their milk and they took a milk, they can set it on that shared table, and another student is able to take that item. We monitor them. We actually, at our meeting last, just, just last week with our elementary schools, identified that several schools don't have, you know, a nice share cart. So, we are working on getting those ordered for next school year. We have cold pans in the share carts to try and preserve the, the safety of the food as well. But just from a food safety standpoint and what Minnesota Department of Health requires and allows, items should be individually packaged. So, they shouldn't be placing a slice of pizza on there, for example.
Anything we prepare can't be left there for a different student, right?
Yes, because you don't know if it's been contaminated. So, and they, they can always share with a friend if that is allowed within the school.
Sure.
All right. So, schools that operate meal programs under USDA are also required to provide reasonable accommodations to students with special dietary needs. We require a special diet statement to be on file before we accommodate with special needs that must give adequate details of the foods to be avoided and the foods to be substituted, as well as a signature of a licensed physician, physician's assistant, or an advanced practice nurse. And the three of those professions are because those are the professionals who are able to write prescriptions in the state of Minnesota. These special diet statements are very important because they give us an idea of how we can safely provide a meal to those students when it is medically necessary. We write a menu that is free of the top nine allergens that mirrors the regular lunch menu as much as possible so students still feel a sense of inclusivity by being able to eat something similar to what their peers are eating. Usually, the school nurses are the first contact. We work closely with them. They have a copy of the special diet statement so they can send those home with students and families to be completed. I work with nurses on any concerns. I keep them in the loop of students who are receiving special meals. And many times, students who receive special meals from us also have allergy plans on file with the school nurse. When we have a request, we develop a relationship with that family. I give, I always start by giving them a call and explain our process, educate them on what we can offer and options outside of our standard menu if appropriate, as well as developing that ongoing communication regarding the student's dietary needs and menu choices. I put them in, in contact with the kitchen nurse or the kitchen, the kitchen manager. And that relationship is ongoing with the family and the kitchen manager as well as far as what day, you know, what days that student wants to eat meals.
Yeah, Amber, sorry.
Regarding the previous slide, to what extent are cultural food needs considered by your team when designing menus? Like, do you try to avoid pork or, you know, how, how, how does, how do you consider that?
Yep. So, we, we do try to take that into consideration. Our menus do flag, or we have a notation on our menus, should something contain pork. Many times, our proteins, I will point out on the menu that it is beef taco meat, or we have pepperoni that is turkey and beef. Or if it is pork, I try to notate that as much as possible, saying it's pork carnitas. This year, we tried to incorporate a few more, more cultural foods. We had samboosa on our menu back in November, and we'll be doing that again this spring. And that was a huge hit in our schools. We've done chicken tikka masala over the last couple of months. We'll be doing that again. And just actually, this week on Thursday in our elementaries and next week in our secondaries, we'll be doing tamalees. So, just to kind of expose kids to different cultural foods. And the kids who know what those foods are and might eat them at home get really excited and can share with their friends. This is what I have at home. So, it's really fun.
I think one thing the district might want to consider, at least this might be a school site issue, not a whole district issue, but I know there's second choice, right? So, if first choice doesn't fit your culture, your, your food needs, you could choose second perhaps. In kindergarten, at least at the school my kids go to, they're not allowed to choose second choice. And so, and I, I understand it's hard for kindergartners to make choices. That's probably the reason. But I think it also could restrict some of our students' ability to have, have lunch. So, we might want to think about that.
Yes. So, during COVID, it really came to light that there were a lot of families within our district that were requesting vegetarian. And so, in twenty, the 2021 school year, we started incorporating a meatless option into all of our menus. So, and we'll mention that here in a little bit. But it is a, it is principle-led with the choices of students, kindergarten students being able to take that second choice. So, it is definitely encouraged by our department to allow for that so all of those students have that same experience.
Hey, can I make sure that both of you are speaking into the mic? Because our listeners can have a challenge. So, even if you're offset a little bit, just kind of lean over there, okay? Thanks.
Okay. Okay. So, over the past, past few years, we've been also incorporating more scratch-made menu items on our menus and continue to strive towards incorporating more. Over the past two years, we've been replacing lower-quality items with higher-quality proteins and entrees, in particular, chicken and beef items. We review ingredients and nutrition labels closely, trying to select items that are minimally processed with fewer additives and do taste testing of products before placing them on our menus. We, we receive funding from, for USDA foods each year, and one of the areas that we can invest those funds in is the Department of Defense's Fresh Fruits and Vegetables program. And this program allows us to use those USDA funds towards the purchase of fresh fruits and vegetables that are grown domestically. Over the past couple of years, we've invested more of our USDA foods funds into those domestically grown fresh fruits and vegetables. And some, just to highlight some of our more popular menu items, we have burrito bar at our secondary schools with scratch-made cilantro, cilantro lime, brown rice with, and seasoned chicken and pico de gallo. Orange chicken with brown rice and steamed broccoli. We do deli turkey, ham, or chicken with veggies on whole-grain tortillas or whole-grain croissants at our high schools. So, grab-and-go wraps and sandwiches. Breakfast for lunch is very popular and can include cinnamon-glazed French toast, mini pancakes, chicken sausage patties, cheese omelette, cheese omelets, and hash browns. We also do a scratch-made Asian sesame noodles, and tacos are always popular. We do chicken or beef. We have taco salads, beefy nachos, or taco in a bag. So, they're all popular. Kids like tacos.
Is this when staff comes in with samples for all of them?
I was just thinking that the...
Yeah, I'll volunteer to taste test.
The breakfast for lunch is always super popular, but when I worked in the lunchroom, I hated it because of all the syrup that was everywhere. It was just so sticky. It's like the homecoming day with the glitter on the pants.
So, at each of our grade levels, the number of choices that students have to select from does increase. At elementary, we have a hot and a cold entree choice every day. And every day, one of those choices is vegetarian. At the middle school, they have five to six choices daily, and every day, there are at least a couple of vegetarian options. At the high school, many choices are available daily. There's, we do a peanut, peanut butter and jelly uncrustable, grab-and-go lunch, box salads, deli sandwiches or wraps, pizza, chicken, like a chicken tender, like a grill basket, hot sandwiches, burgers, and then one or two other main hot choices. All of our meals are served with a variety of hot or cold vegetables, fruit, and milk. Students are also encouraged to fill up on fruits and veggies and are allowed to take as many servings as they would like within reason, as long as they plan to eat it. Yeah. So, just to kind of explain, some of our pictures just kind of highlights how, how we present our food because we know everybody eats with their eyes. So, we have pictures of some of our wraps at our high schools. We have fruit cups and yogurt parfaits that we sell. There is a chicken Caesar salad at the top, moving around across the top. There's a couple of pictures just how our kitchen managers do such a great job of presenting our fresh fruits and vegetables for our students. You can see some of our students in those pictures enjoying, I think it's a new bagel lunch that we have at our elementary school. We have a new bone-in chicken wings at our high schools with onion rings, and that has been a big hit. There's a picture of our, one of our grill lines at the high school that kind of shows the burgers and the chicken. It's served very much like a grab-and-go style, and they can take what they like. And of course, our famous all-cart chocolate chip cookies, which students have deemed the Lakeville Cookies. We've even had graduated students come back at breaks and ask their younger siblings to bring them home for them. So, they're very popular. And one picture that I just, we threw in there because I thought it was very interesting. If you're unaware of kind of the magnitude and the quantity of foods that we cook on a daily basis, that top-right picture is a picture of a roll-in rack oven from Lakeville North High School. So, she loads up the pan of food and bakes that much at one time. So, I just give you an idea of the quantity that we're making at the time.
So, we use average number of meals per day and percent of students eating to track participation in school meals. The school year 2324 was the first year of Minnesota Free School Meals. As we expected, participation increased and doubled at breakfast. We have seen a slight decrease this year in breakfast participation at our elementary schools, but an increase at our high schools. The increase at the high schools is due in part to a new breakfast cart at Lakeville North High School where students who are coming in off the bus can grab breakfast off a cart situated by the doors instead of going down to the cafeteria. This cart has increased our capacity to serve more students. Participation at lunch has steadily increased since the start of Minnesota Free School Meals. This year, we're feeding over eighty-two hundred students free lunch, free lunches per day, and that doesn't even include student à la carte sales. High schools are each averaging about eight hundred to a thousand dollars in à la carte sales daily. This equates to a much larger number of students coming through our lunch lines each day than just two years ago, about thirteen hundred more lunches per day. We have individual schools with over ninety percent participation at lunch, which is the highest percent participation that we have ever seen. Due to the Minnesota Free School Meals, we are feeding more students. This has created an issue with the time students have for lunch. The amount of time given to students for lunchtime has not increased, yet we have to get students through it in the same amount of time, which has decreased the amount of time students actually have to sit down and eat. Lunchtime should be an enjoyable and stress-free time for students, and when they have to hurry through eating because they have less than ten minutes to eat once they have gone through the serving line, it can create a stressful experience for some students. Elementary students have twenty minutes from the time they enter the cafeteria to go through the line, sit down, and clear their trays before returning to class. At our middle schools, over recent years, the number of lunch periods has decreased from six lunch periods to three, doubling the number of students to feed in one lunch period and pushing cafeteria space to the limits. Students have twenty-five minutes from class dismissal to the bell to leave the cafeteria. Depending on the menu day, students at the end of the line can sometimes have only ten minutes to eat. At the high school, students have thirty minutes from the time their class is dismissed to the time their next class starts. Per student feedback, many students bring lunch from home because they don't have enough time to eat school lunch due to the long lines. This year, as Kim mentioned, we have, we have started offering some cultural choices within our menus. So, we were doing this pre-COVID, and we decided this year we wanted to return to that initiative. In November, we offered beef samosas, which were made by a local Somali women's-owned company called Hoyo. These were a huge hit, and as she mentioned, we'll be offering them again this spring. This past month, we offered tikka masala with naan, a popular Indian chicken dish in a tomato-based spice sauce. Next week, we are featuring chicken tamalees at our schools. The picture on the right is of an elementary student who's having fun building a bagel, banana, and apple cinnamon chickpea spread sandwich. This new menu item is made with the amazing chickpea spread, which is made locally here in Minnesota and is a new menu item that was recently added to our elementary menus and has already become a huge hit. The cafeteria is, is an extension of the classroom where students can learn about and try new foods, how they are good for us, and maybe find a new favorite food. When planning our menus, we strive to offer variety and expose students to new foods. When planning our menus, we strive to offer variety and expose students to new foods. Our staff also do a very good job of encouraging students to try new things. Last summer, we went out to bid for local apples. We received bids back from three local orchards and entered into an agreement with Montgomery Orchard to supply us with apples throughout the fall. We received a variety of apples throughout the fall months, including, or allowing students to try Zestar, Sweet Tango, Honeycrisp, Harrelson, Cortland, and Fireside apples. On October 10th, students participated in the Great Apple Crunch, an event to celebrate Farm-to-School Month and local apple farmers. We served apples from Montgomery Orchard that day to celebrate their delicious apples. Just last month, we were awarded with a $5,000 First Bite Farm-to-School Grant from the Minnesota Department of Agriculture. This grant will allow us to continue purchasing local apples and work on expanding on our goal to purchase more locally grown and raised food. Our plan is to partner with the Good Acre Food Hub to purchase local vegetables such as cherry tomatoes, bell peppers, and cucumbers. All right. That concludes our presentation. We would like to thank you for having us to present, and would like to extend an invitation to you. If you would ever like to have a tour of one of our kitchens or come out for lunch, we're happy to have you. And we are happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Director Cameron.
Thanks for the presentation. I especially love to hear how local businesses are being supported, both, I forgot to mention with Schmitty and Son's presentation and this, like, the school district is supporting, I think, local businesses and local economy, and I think that's important. So thank you for pursuing those opportunities rather than kind of a national wholesaler at times. We got an email, actually, quite a while ago now, from a student, and I wanted to bring it up because I've also thought about it. And then in the Dakota County bulletin or brochure thing that we get, I read about this as well. To what extent is Lakeville thinking about using reusable or compostable products in the lunchroom rather than the plastic? I know Dakota County offers grants. I think 196 just moved to all stainless steel trays. And the student that wrote is, you know, concerned about the environmental impact of all the plastic that's thrown away every day in Lakeville. And so any effort towards that, we can report back to them.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So with Highview, the opening of Highview Elementary, we actually received the $10,000 Dakota County grant for reusables. So we were able to purchase reusable trays, which on a daily basis, we use reusable trays unless we have a dishwasher go down or we're, we're really short-staffed. So we do use reusable trays on a daily basis. At Highview Elementary, too, we purchased reusable silverware. My goal at that school was to try and use as little paper products as we could because my goal moving forward is to try and reduce the amount that we are using, A for cost, but also B just for the environmental, environmental impact. We have moved away from using styrofoam trays when we don't have dishwasher to use, and so we do use a compostable tray. And yes, we're, we're trying to move towards more bulk serve. Our secondaries do a lot of bulk serve fruits and vegetables. Our elementary is just to speed up serving time, trying to get the kids through the serving line quicker. We do, do more individual portions of items, but yes, as much as we can, we're trying to move towards those compostable items if we are using paper products, but they're not always available for the products that we need.
Director Anderson.
I actually have two questions. Thank you for such a lovely presentation. I'm liking all those options, and I, those sambooses, right, were a big hit. I heard, I heard all about it. So with regard to what you were just talking about, when, when did we move away from like the metal forks and spoons and like, why did, were there concerns that, I guess I'm trying to understand that move away from that, is that, that's what I remember as a kid having?
Yeah. And I'm not sure when that changed. I've been in the district for almost 11 years, and we do have a few, I did forget to mention, we do have a few schools, elementaries, that do use reusable silverware. We're trying to move towards getting more schools to using that, but to say when that happened, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure. It was before my time here.
Like, are they throwing them away, or are they, you know, I guess I would, anyway. So my other question...
And that does happen.
My other question is, I know we've been talking for years now about this surplus in your fund, and someday having to give money back, which I don't think anybody wants to, we want to be able to use it. So with regard to the farm-to-table options, I know you're talking about grant money, but is it possible to use some of the extra funding to do more collaboration with local farmers?
Yeah, certainly. In regards to the fund balance that we have, we are working very hard on trying to spend that down. Like I said, we're standardizing equipment, so purchasing a lot of equipment, adding new positions, adding labor where we are able to. But in regards to the food, yes, we are, we're, with farm-to-school and purchasing locally, there's a lot of new regulations when it comes to how you're acquiring that food. So it's a learning process and learning how we need to go about that. And it's easier to do small steps at a time, you know, as opposed to trying to completely overhaul things. So I think that's kind of been our goal. We started this year with the apples, and then we're like, well, let's try, let's apply for the grant, you know, just to kind of open and broaden our horizons. But yes, certainly, we are looking at where else can we expand on that and manage it with the, the staff that we have as well, so.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask that any board member reports be reserved until next week because we have like a minute and a half to adjourn here. Nothing from superintendent? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So?
Moved by Director Cameron. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There being multiple seconds, all those in favor of adjourning? Well, we'll give it to, to Director Baker, but all those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. We are done.